Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. I would like to call to order our special call meeting. And Madam Clerk, would you call the floor, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle, Mrs. Lucas Burke, Mr. Moody, Dr. Whitaker, Mr. Woodard, Mayor Glabber.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Before we begin, and I turn the floor over to the individuals who called for this special meeting, Dr. Whitaker, and Councilman Chris Woodard, and Vice Mayor Barnes, I want to make a statement on behalf of crime that we're experiencing in the city of Portsmouth. And very clearly, I want to send the message to everyone in our city that crime, the reduction of crime, is a shared responsibility. And we take it all extremely, very seriously. Any life that is lost in our city due to crime or violence is always going to be unacceptable. And with that, I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Whitaker. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and fellow colleagues. As I stated in the email, there's a need for us to come together to address some of the federal issues as far as how council and the city is involved in addressing the crime issue. We have a person in our midst who has served the city well, has been a part of this community for a long time, has a breadth of experience at the federal level in dealing with issues within communities as it relates to crime and violence, and that is our Sheriff, Michael Moore. And I've asked him to come and brief council, first of all, in the community, on his background with federal involvement, those resources that we can tap into at the federal level that we may not have tapped into. And so, he's here tonight, and I'm looking forward to hear his presentation. So, Mayor, if it is appropriate, if you would call Sheriff to the podium.
Sheriff Moore, sir, would you please come forward? Thank you for coming, sir. And Sheriff, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and good evening, citizens. I have to be honest with you. When I first received this invitation, I thought about it for a few days, and my inclination was to really not come. And I tell you what those reasons are, because I didn't want to be part of anything that casts anything continuing to be negative for the city of Portsmouth. But out of the respect for the request, number one, is why I'm standing here. Number two, out of respect for the citizens, to see what we can bring to this city that would address the issues that has been going on for a long time. It's nothing new, and it's no disrespect to Chief Prince, as the chief of police. He is pretty new here. He's pretty new to the area, and basically, as the chief, less than 10 months on the job. So, those were the reasons, and those are the reasons that I'm here. But when we talk about fighting crime, we really have to look within. Because when I look at, now, I ask for your respect, because I'm gonna say a few things, but it's all gonna make a full circle and come back to the crime issue. Because when I look at elected officials, and even those officials that are appointed, the first thing I've always looked at is, is that person a me or we? Because, yeah, I'm standing before you now in the capacity of sheriff, but I'm also a full-time citizen. So, when I ask for something, I'm not asking for me, Michael Moore. I'm asking for we, collectively, everybody in the community, because that's the way I look at it. Because if we don't come together and fight the problems internally that we have on city council, local government, wherever in this city, it's gonna be hard to combat the problems that we have. Now, I have to say this. It has been a pleasure working with City Manager, Ms. Angel Jones. It has been a pleasure working with the new police chief, Chief Prince. We have a great relationship, and I consider both of them to be "we" people. Because, you know, I hear, you know, I'm out in the communities every day. You know, one of the things I do as a sheriff is not just be concerned about security of the jail, the courthouse, and civil processing. One of the things that I promised the citizens of this city when I was running for election five years ago was to be more engaged in the community, fighting crime. And that wasn't an effort to compete with the police department or to replace the police department. It was to augment and help them, because helping them helps all of us. That was the theory behind all of it, because to me, this day and time, if we don't adjust to the issues we have, if we don't adjust to the amount of crime we have across this country, we can't continue to operate like we did five, 10, 15 years ago. So, the police department needs all the assistance and support. The city manager needs all the assistance and support she can get. The city council and the mayor need all the citizens to pull up. This is the only way we're gonna get out of this. This is the only way that we're gonna have to work together. Because I've had, look, I hear things in the street, they're not happy with the city manager, okay. They're not happy with the chief, probably not happy with me, but I'm kinda like on a different streak than those city officials. It is hard to perform in your job, as your duty as a city manager, as your duty as a chief of police, if it's always gonna be that segment of the population that's gonna be nagging away for no other reason but it being personal. And it's time for us to take the personal out of it, because it's strictly business. We have to be dedicated to doing what we know we need to do as a unit. I don't care if you all don't eat together, socialize together, and when I say "you all", I mean all of us, because I'm included in that. But when it's time to come and take care of the city business and address the issues that we have in our communities, we have to put all that stuff on the back burner. You can go on and dislike each other when you're off the clock, not doing city business. But when we are all "we", we again, not me, we all are in this together, we have to show the public we're in this together, because if we don't, we already behind the eight ball. We're playing catch-up now. And by this time next year, that casino would be open. And I don't have a dog in the fight with whether it's good or whether it's bad, my only concern is, can we protect the citizens of this city, their property, their livelihood? Can we protect their kids so they can have an opportunity to grow old, to grow old? I mean, because when I look at the stats, and the city manager was kind enough to give me some stats, from January of last year up until now, I haven't had an opportunity to share those, because the chief and I have been in discussion about this program that we're gonna try to pursue, to get it up and running from the federal government. When I look at the number of people that have died under the age of 19 in a short period of time, it's heartbreaking. It is heartbreaking. So, back to the fact that I'm out in the community, you know, again, like I said, just bear with me, just bear with me, I'm just gonna make a full circle, it's gonna be related to crime. It's been nights that I get calls from citizens, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. And that's no disrespect to the chief and the police department, it's just that I grew up in this city, I know a lot of people, my mom taught school here for almost 40 years, so it's just the way it is. So, when those people call, I get out of my bed, and I go to whatever the issue is, and I go by myself. My wife is concerned, because, you know, she said, "Well, just the climate, this day and time, it's not safe." But if I can tell you a short story, not many years ago, when I was an undercover agent working for DEA in these streets of Portsmouth, was the first time that I had a death threat against me. I was trying to break up a heroin ring, and someone came up, stuck a shotgun to the side of my neck while the deal was being done, blindsided me. That was the first time. And I did that, and it was always a question of, why would you expose yourself to a community that you've grown up in, because you know people. I felt like it was my duty, I had sworn to enforce the law, because I would rather for that gun to have been pulled on me than interview all or anybody in yours family. So, to fast-forward, I was transferred out of Norfolk and sent to Pittsburgh. That was when I was with the DEA. A number of years later, I was recruited by ATF to join forces with them. That position brought me back to Portsmouth. So, back to Portsmouth again, even though my office is in Norfolk, I had a, I just had a connection with Portsmouth, it was my home. So, I wanted to do everything I possibly could to make sure to rid the streets of crime. So, this time, working on investigation, and not only endangered my life, but a contract was put out for my family as well as my mother. So, my family had to be relocated for four months. I didn't leave, I refused to leave, I refused to take a threat about my life when I'm trying to do my job. As long as my family is safe, my mom refused, because my father passed 35 years ago, so she was alone. So, they put a round-the-clock security on her. So, I share that with you, because I ask for respect to just let me finish a few more things, because I pay my dues for this city, and I have the same desire to make sure that these streets are safe for the citizens as I did 30 years ago, when I first started out with the federal government. But back again, we have to look at ourselves. We have to look at ourselves and say, are we a "we" person, or are we a "me" person? Because if that answer is "we", we're gonna do everything collectively in our power to make sure that when your aunt, your uncle, your grandmother, your grandfather, your mom and dad, your sister and brother, your children, when they leave the house, they have an opportunity to come back home safely. So, it requires all of us to work together. That's the only way we're gonna get this thing done. That is it. And we don't have any room for any attitudes, any personalities. And again, I stress, I love working with Ms. Jones, I love working with the chief of police, they're good people, they're "we" people. So, we have to put all personal stuff aside and give it a shot. And if it didn't work out, then down the road, you all make your evaluations with whatever way you decide to go. But right now, it's too critical, we cannot afford to keep pushing a reset button, we cannot afford to keep having a revolving door of key positions in this city be vacant. Take the personal stuff out of it, this is business. The citizens are tired of it, because like I said, I have that connection. I leave my office every day at 12 o'clock and go and patrol the streets, as the sheriff, because I love getting out, and I see what's happening. And I see the efforts that the police department are putting forward to combat the crime. But they can't do it all alone, so that's why we're out there trying to help them. Again, when I decided to venture into being proactive and fighting crime, it wasn't to compete with them, it wasn't to replace them, it was to assist them. That's all it's about, working together, because this is my home, I love it. I could have retired and gone a lot of different places, but I came back here, because my mother is here, my in-laws are here, and the people that I grew up with, that I love deeply and respect and believe in, are here in this city. So, I want to make it better. Now, this is the last thing I say before I get into this federal program. And this isn't meant to be critical towards anyone or any one group. But when people who wanna come here to live, raise their families, and open a business, if they see the conflicts that's constantly going on, they're not gonna come here. And again, I talk from experience. I have a friend in Northern Virginia who introduced me to a friend of his, and we became real good friends, who own multi-car dealerships. And I have an impression of them, I've had this conversation with the mayor and Mr. Battle, and actually, Ms. Lucas Burke, some years ago. I've been trying to persuade them to come here and talk to our economic development and open up a car dealership. Because again, we're talking about fighting crime. Fighting crime is not just policing the streets with police officers or sheriff's deputies, it's providing opportunities to rid society in our region of poverty. So, this gentleman was thinking about it, still is, opening up a car dealership. And for you all that's pretty young and new, at one time, Portsmouth had 20-plus new car dealerships. And the importance of a car dealership in this day and time is, when I was opening discussion with him about it, it was also, if you open up to sell cars, you're not just selling vehicles to people that live in Portsmouth, you're pulling people from all around. But one of the key aspects to this company was, they were gonna open a training area that was gonna train our young folks, like they used to have years ago at IC Norcom High School. I told him that's the only way he would be allowed to come here. Imagine me telling a millionaire that. But it has to be something to give back to the community other than selling vehicles. And he was on board with that. And that's not only providing an opportunity for our young people, but adults as well. But the conversation kinda died down because of the conflict that he sees going on in the city. He would love to come here, I'm actually going to probably about another two or three weeks and just gnaw at him again. But that's when I talk about crime, all of that has an effect on crime. The face that we put on the city of Portsmouth, if it's that negative, it's not gonna pull a business in, and this business has something to give back to the community that will address some of our poverty issues. That's important. I couldn't care less about the cars, it was the training that was gonna go along with this business. So, I'm trying to talk this man into setting up business here, but we just have to get on the same page. And I'm not saying that to be critical of anyone, because I've been, you know, I'm in the same boat, you know? I don't do everything, I'm still in practice, of learning to do the best I can. That's an everyday experience and an everyday effort. So, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not calling names, but I'm just giving you something to think about. And when you go home late on tonight, I really hope you do think about it, because all of that has an impact on crime. If we don't show a unified force, we're gonna lose this battle. And I've never been involved in anything, other than when I played college basketball, we owned a losing team. I've never been involved in anything other than that was a losing proposition. So, please, think deep. And it's not just on you, it's all of us in here. I mean, this is our city. We cannot continue to have news conferences talking about what we're gonna do. The next news conference we plan on having, and I can tell you right now, so just don't pencil it in on your calendar, is the success that we will have if we can get that federal government to come in here to assist us. And again, that's no disrespect to the police department, saying they can't do their job. But this is a program that I participated in way back in the late 80s and early 90s. And I'm sure you all remember when Richmond was the homicide capital of the United States. That's when we did that program. Back then, it was known as ACES, and then it became ACES 1, ACES 2, ACES 3. I didn't participate in the Richmond program, I participated in the one in Baltimore, and eventually, the one in Detroit, and some other cities. But it's been, it's been, it's been across this country for many years. The good thing about it now, that makes it different than when I actually actively participated in it, was normally, like in Richmond, when that program took off in Richmond, it only involved the ATF, which is the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, and the Richmond Police, and the Virginia State Police. It has expanded over the years now, where it's a lot of federal, the majority of the federal agencies are involved, ATF, DEA, Secret Service, and the FBI. And the thing about this program is, it's cost-effective. It doesn't cost the city one red dime. They ask for volunteers, sometimes you don't volunteer, you get drafted, I was one of those. They pay to per diem, they house, and normally, for it to be effective, it has to be a minimum of 120 days. And as I recall, I think that Richmond, I think it lasted for 10 to 12 months, it was pretty sustained. But the key thing with those programs, like again, it doesn't cost the city anything, the key with those programs are, you have to have a plan afterwards, because how do you sustain, and how do you go about sustaining what you were able to achieve with that extra manpower? Because they would deploy those federal agents here to work in conjunction with local law enforcement. It's a round-the-clock thing, and it just really, you know, and I've been guilty of this. You know, we always hear the adage, "We can't arrest our way out of this." Well, I think we need to give it a good shot. And when I say, "We need to arrest our way out of this," I'm not talking about profiling people, I'm not talking about violating someone's human or civil rights, none of that. It's just hard police work, saturating these neighborhoods, getting to know who live in these neighborhoods, servicing those people, asking what their concerns are. So, it's not that type of thing, because I wouldn't have been involved in anything that profile people and just randomly target people, that's not the way it goes. So, back in, when President Trump came in office, they start pushing this program again. And really, they tried to rename and rebrand it, but really, it's not a new program. I gave the mayor some literature on it, the chief has some literature on it, it's just a program that has been around when cities need assistance. And right now, all the cities in this nation needs some type of assistance. It affects us more in a community the size of ours, because we're relatively a small community, but we're almost still 100,000 people. And to be short-staffed, you know, and I know that's something that the citizens don't wanna hear, how short the police department is, or how short the sheriff's department is. What the citizens wanna know is, what are you gonna do with the people you have? So, with the people we have, we join forces, and we try to combat the issues that we see every day as far as the criminality in the streets. So, with those added resources coming from the federal government, it can be a drastic, a drastic turnaround. And like I said, I'm telling you from experience how well it worked, and I had been in a lot of cities, not for the extended periods of time, because I had all, I also served the government when I was, as a crisis slash crisis hostage negotiator. So, I traveled to a lot of those cities when those programs were up and running, when it was days when they were gonna make those huge arrests, and my job was to get on the phone and talk people out so nobody would get killed. So, they are successful. It's cost-effective, because it doesn't cost us anything. But again, we start fighting crime by uniting together, taking all the personal feelings out of it, and just making it strictly business, because again, are we "me" or are we "we"? And I hope that everybody that, because you represent our city, I represent our city, the chief represents the city, we all need to be "we" people, because it's not personal, it's just strictly business, and we got to get down to business. Because I see a trend that's coming during these warm months, when these days get longer, that's not a good look. It's just, that's not a good look. Programs work, they do, that's the great thing, we have a number of programs. And I give you an example, and then I ask you if you have any questions. The proof that these programs work, Colonel Waters, who is the under sheriff at the sheriff's office, runs a program that meets six days a week with kids. We started out with about two or three kids, man, it's double-digit with the kids. Just last week, because we work to not just develop a relationship with that child, we work to develop a relationship with their parents. So, just last week, early one morning, Colonel Waters, who I keep pointing, he's sitting in the very back, got a call from a parent who was concerned that her 13-year-old son had taken her gun out of her lockbox and was heading to school with it. So, without that kinda connection, and he was stopped before he even got to the school bus. So, without having that kinda connection in the community with these parents and these kids, that could have resulted in something that would have been horrendous. So, programs do work, but what I'm telling you this evening is, all the programs we have that we support through the city of Portsmouth, they cannot operate at their full capacity until we take the streets back. And when I say "take the streets back," you see people driving in Portsmouth with no license plates on the cars, you see people driving in Portsmouth 95 miles an hour down High Street, you see people driving in Portsmouth with 30-day tags that are 170 days old. So, crime affects a lot of things, because when the public, when you, and when I stop those people and have a conversation with them, when the public sees that, they think this is a crime-ridden city. So, that's what I mean, we have to come together to pull all this stuff back in, to pull it all back together. Because when they develop that type of attitude, that's when it starts to escalate over time, and before you know it, where we are now with all these homicides, and some of homicides you're not gonna be able to control, especially the ones that happen behind closed doors. But we have to make sure that the public know that we're out there addressing those issues as a unified team. And you gotta support people, because look, I, all the supervisors I had when I was with the government, before I became a supervisor, I necessarily, they weren't my first, or second, or third pick. But it was my job to make sure that they succeeded, because if they succeeded, the public was gonna get what they deserved, and that was people who were working on behalf of the citizens of that particular area. Because everywhere that I've always been assigned was my home. I treated it as my home, because it was my home at the time. But this is truly my home, and that's why this is so personal. I mean, I ride around these streets, and I think about, and I stop and park just to show a presence, I think about how it used to be. I'm always thinking about the good old days, always thinking about the good old days. But I want to be able to celebrate the good old days right now, as we live. I don't wanna have to wait to five, 10, 15 years and look back and say, "These were the good old days." I want to be able to realize that now, and I want the citizens of Portsmouth to be able to realize, these are the good old days, now that we have challenges, but we're gonna come together as one single unit, and we're gonna address those challenges, and we're gonna make a difference in this city. That's the attitude we have to have. If you love this city, and even if you don't love each other, if you love your family and love this city, all of us are gonna have to pull together and stop all this nonsense, and stop all this dislike, discontent, and hate, and come together. That's it. Just come together, it's that simple. But to fight crime, we gotta stop fighting among ourselves. That's it. That's, and I appreciate the time you all have given me, I really, really do. I said more than I ever thought I would ever say, and like I said, my thought was to not to come, because I don't want to be involved in a lot of discontent, and I just don't. But I was invited, and out of respect for the invitation, and out of respect for the citizens of this city, I just felt like I needed, I ain't know, I hadn't planned on saying all this, that I pulled up and parked out front. So, hopefully, I didn't step on anybody's toes, or I'm not, didn't mean to be critical towards anyone at all, I'm just stating some things that I want all of us, not just you all, not just the citizens, me as well, to just think about, and how do we move forward in a nice, positive, harmonious direction in once for people? Because it's hard to put pressure on people if they worried about their jobs. You know, we can't do that, we, that's, it's not right, first of all. We have to support people, we have to get behind, because look, I haven't always, gonna say I haven't always been great at what I do, I had a lot of people behind me, propping me up, leading me, and offering that support. That's how I got to where I am now. And that's, go back 40, it goes back my entire life, not just since I came into law enforcement. There was always someone, support. And that's what we have to do for the city manager, that's what we have to do to the chief, and I hope you do it for me as well, and anybody, anybody that holds any position in this city, whether it's the city attorney, city clerk, we have to give them our support. You can have those differences, you can discuss those differences, but you can't have those differences and hold something against someone without having a discussion of how can we make it right? So, that's all I'm asking, that's all I ask, as the sheriff of Portsmouth, and number one, as a citizen of Portsmouth, that's it.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor?
Yes. Thank you, Sheriff Moore. The information that I was seeking has nothing to do with personal, has nothing to do with any reflection on the chief. The chief has been before council, specifically speaking about a program, a software, but you haven't.
Right.
And I wanted to hear, and I wanted council to hear, which has nothing to do with any type of relationships on council.
Yeah.
Let me finish.
Okay.
And so, to couch it within that, that was not the intent of this meeting, to couch it in some type of antagonism, which I told you that. So, what I want to get more information on is the federal program that you're speaking of, that you referred to, and that was...
Operation Legend.
ACES.
Right.
Is ACES and Legend the same thing?
Yeah, they're the same thing. ACES, it started out years ago, in each region of the country, when they would have these operations, they would name it whatever. So, it was ACES 1 in Richmond, and Baltimore, and then kind of the DC area, it was ACES 2. But now, the name is whatever they decide to name it, but it's the same premise of how they go about partnering up with local law enforcement at the expense of the government, and really, really saturating. And the thing about it, it's not just an enforcement efforts, but they come in and bring those technical things, like gun tracing, or evidence, like when you get shell casings, they can do on the scene, because they have a system called NIIBEN, which you enter that in, and they also do the DNA samples for all evidence that's collected. And that's how it helps to tie in and really target people that have been identified. Again, not profiling, but targeting people that you have that collected evidence on, that's been able to lead you in that direction to address the issues, the criminal aspects.
Right. And so, this program, you've known about since when?
A long time, long time.
Right, because your resume is full of activity within the federal...
Yeah, like I said, I had an opportunity to participate in two of those type of, those type of operations, and they've always been successful, you know? So, again, it's, the manpower is the key element, the manpower and the technical assistance that they bring along with it, that really makes the difference in fighting that crime.
Right, because you're gonna actually have federal, there would be federal employees here. So, my question is, you've known it for a long time, how long has the city manager, the chief, how long have you all been working on?
Oh, yeah, I just spoke to the city manager and the mayor about it, not quite two weeks ago.
Okay.
And the chief and I have been talking about it since last week.
Okay.
I wanted to run it by them first, to see what they thought of the idea, and I kinda explained it the same way we did this evening, and they were on board with it. So, then, I had discussion with the chief about it, and he's on board.
Okay.
So, now, it's just a matter of us being able to reach out, to get a timeframe, because I'm planning on actually going to Washington, DC. You know, because when you get the senators, our local representatives and our senators involved, it's best to actually go right to those agency directors to get this thing up and running. No disrespect to the local federal offices, you know, I know they have a mission to do, and they're a little overwhelmed also with manpower. So, when, by going directly to the directors of like the ATF, the DEA, and the FBI, they can get this program hopefully up and get it, and plus the US Attorney, which is good, we already have that relationship with the US Attorney's Office. we already have that relationship with the US Attorney's Office locally. And plus our Commonwealth Attorney would be involved as well. So that's, that's, that's the mission is to, I just wanted you all to know what was going on and see what you thought of it as collectively as a group and, and, and me and the chief, we, we can push forward to get this thing.
So presently, so presently, we do not have those boots on the ground that you're speaking of would be here with, with ACES.
Right.
That, that's what I wanted to find out.
Exactly.
What, what are the resources that we need to bring in at the federal level to help with what we're seeing happening?
Right.
Here in the city, which impacts the whole region actually.
Exactly.
And so that, now also, as far as any local, any, any local assistance that you're, that you're in need of as far as addressing these issues, are there any budgetary issues that we need to be aware of?
Yeah, yeah, and, and the city manager has been real great addressing those issues. We, we're supposed to, we're going to have a budget meeting coming up soon, it hasn't been scheduled yet. You know, and I've shared with the city, the city manager exactly, some of the things that we need. You know, anything from equipment like vehicles, of course, body cameras, you know, tho, those type of things and, and hopefully an increase in the supplemental pay from this, from the city, because you know, the majority of our salary is paid from the state. A portion, we get a supplement from the city. And, and if you all recall that, that memorandum that I sent out, it kind of addressed that, 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 that number has not changed in over 20 years as far as that supplement. So it's been good working with the city manager because she was receptive to it. She was actually shocked when I provided that information that that number has not, that, that, that dollar amount had not increased in over 20 years.
So no personnel issue, no additional staffing?
Yeah, we, we do, when I came into office to kind of relieve some of the stress on the police department, we took over booking. The sheriff's department in the past had, did booking, but for whatever reason, it left the sheriff's department and went back to the police department. And, and with booking, it really ties up a lot of their police officers. If they make an arrest, they may be tied up for a few hours, six hours or maybe an entire shift, just processing and getting that person booked for the jail. So we took that back over from the police department, like my second week in office when I first came into office in 2018. When that, when, when that process from booking went from the jail, from this sheriff's department to the police department, well, yeah, initially to the police department, 14 positions went with it. When it came back to the sheriff's office in 2018, we got, we were able to recoup four of those 14 positions, but we could really manage with 10. And I tell you why that would be critically important, because that, that crime unit that, that we developed a few years ago that rotates throughout the city, when we took over the school resource officer positions, I lost the majority of that unit that went into the schools to do that function for the school system. So I was unable to put that unit back on the street at full capacity, you know, it's only a few of them that sound, I mean, I can't stick them out there by themselves to do what we were doing for the communities. So those, those positions would be critical because then I would be able to backfill and, and, and get that unit back on the street to work in conjunction with the police department and just circulating throughout all the communities in Portsmouth.
Okay.
So those are the key things, those personnel, the vehicles, you know, which, you know, we, we just, we don't really have any backup. If one of our cars break down, the backup has owned a car with 300,000 miles on it. So, so, thanks, thank you.
Mr. Battle, Councilman Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. The program that the sheriff is talking about, I approached the city manager about it and we approved it. It's a $2 million program. I wrote the schematic for the program. I helped staff the program because you have to have special men to get the confidence of the kids. I'm there every day that I'm free. I assist them in any way when they go on trips. I will finance the funds that they spend. So I just want you to know the complete gamut of what, you know, transpires here. Now, Mr. Moore, my best friend, how many years have I been asking for 15 vehicles for you to have a greater visibility and assist this department as much as can? How many years?
Five and counting.
Okay, okay. Now, we're here to solve the, try to solve the problem of this crime. One of the most impactful things we can do, and we must do if we're to succeed, is we're to, we're going to need to get six of our recreation centers, staff it with five retired school teachers. We're going to have to allow all of the mothers who, and fathers who have kids three years of age to bring those kids there to teach them to read. Because we have far too many kids who can't read. When they get to the first grade and they can't read, then they are matriculated, that means they're pushed forward past and they still can't read. And then in the sixth and the seventh grade, they are embarrassed. They're going to drop out. This is a vital program. I'm writing the, this program as well, the schematic for it. I'm not going to charge the city, I'm a real good guy. But we got to do something like this if we expect to turn around. Now, I don't want to hurt that old timey story, we don't have the money. Because that's an important thing, that's not a mere commodity. We're going to have to teach these kids to read if we're going to turn that population around. Just think, if we did that, three years old, four years old, five years old, when they get, in three years, we'll see the turnaround. So yes, that, that's part of the crime reduction thing. I've known about that program. My friend Welton Beard, who's deceased, used to go on that program, just like you, when we were with the police department. And, and that works, but we have to hit this from a multi-faceted situation. And just as important as that is, will be that program that we put in place to keep these kids to, to read. Now, that old timey stuff, if they're not potty-trained on bringing, I don't want to hurt that. Bring them all. And if the mothers and fathers are working, then they could pay possibly $4 an hour for three more hours until they get off work. We have to put these services in place for every level of development. If we don't, we're going to stay where we are and we're going to be the same. But I am very optimistic that once I finalize this program, that everybody's going to agree with it and we're going to find the money. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, ma'am.
For coming and presenting this information. And it, it sounds like it's, it's great, it's something that we need to implement today. But I guess we need to hear from our city manager and our chief of police, what do we need to do to, to get this going? How soon can we get something like this started? And I know that our city manager and our chief of police and you were there along with some federal agents about six months ago, when the city manager rolled out her plan, her strategic plan.
Right.
To reduce crime in the city. And it sounds like some of these things were engaged, involved in that. I don't know how many citizens were here for that day, but the room was filled with citizens and persons from various.
Agencies.
Law enforcement agencies. And I think coupled with the things that you presented today, along with those things that we heard during that strategic plan rollout, are some of the things that we can implement. So I guess with our city manager, is this something doable? How soon can we get something like this started? And what is it going to take to get it going ASAP? Because we're hurting, our citizens are hurting and, and it's to the point when hurt people are hurt, they hurt other people. And we have people pointing the fingers at everyone, everyone is blaming the game on someone else, when we just need to roll up our sleeves, come up with a plan that's going to work and get it done. Start today, start tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I'm hoping to have, we're going to make some calls before this week is out, the chief and I, and we'll hopefully be able to narrow it down when it would be a possibility. If it's approved by the federal government, how long would it take them to get here and, and get this operation up and running? Because I know we're on that short time clock and I know with the, the days starting to get longer, the weather's starting to get better, normally with that comes crime, crime issues.
Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
And to my police department, my police department, three years ago at a retreat, I introduced a way that we could make you all the second highest-paid folk in the, in the area. At the retreat. And I've been pushing for that ever since. And it gets lost in the wash when, and, and it was sensible, it wasn't an extravagant thing. It was very easy to have done. And so I've been with you. I am with you. I want you to succeed. It's personal. I'm from here. I have the professionalism and the, and the personal. If you show me a guy that's just a professional, that's cool. But if it's personal and you're a professional such as, he's been here all his life, this is personal to us. And we just, oh by the way, I happen to have the professionalism. But again, three years ago, I introduced how we could make you guys the second highest-paid in the area. Thank you.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor and then after you, Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Mayor Glover. Nice presentation, Sheriff Moore. I just want to make it clear that this meeting was appropriate. You know, it was a lot of pushback on it, it was a lot of reluctance on having this meeting, but we can see that the citizens are concerned, we are concerned about the crime that's going on in this, this city. And, and that's why we called you because, you know, my father, he grew up with you and he knows all about your expertise. He knew about, he, he speak highly of you when you ran it the first time and you did not win, and he gave me your whole resume. It didn't take me, a couple of years later to sit here and listen to a presentation about the work that you've done throughout your career. Okay? So that's why we called this meeting, because we know that you have the knowledge and we want to make sure that we have those options and we can put together those programs. And we do want to know when we can start. We do want to know when there's going to be a start date. Because for, for many council meetings, I've been asking, what can we do? If, if the sheriff, if the sheriff department is tied up and they're exhausted and our police officers are strained, we want to make sure, who can we call to assist our, our local public service? You know, we want to know these things. So with that being said, and this Operation Legend program that you say that we possibly can roll out, we do want to know the start date. Right now, you know, last, I mean, last week, we, we had an incident with a teacher, everyone knows that I work in the school system as well. So I mean, what, what we're going to do, wait until a council meeting or are we going to call an emergency council, council meeting? And that's what happened today. Okay? So we're here to make sure that we can hash out some of these issues. I talked to our city manager months ago about crime that was brewing at the BP on Frederick Boulevard. You know, people hanging out, you know, blighted properties and also hangout areas is, is the, the start of crime, you know? And what happened? I think that incident started from that BP, you know? I mean, it's in the center of our city. People from our shipyard area, they ride past it every single day. Some of them don't want to stop there and get any gas, you know? I, I mean, it's, it's in the middle of the city, it's a common sense issues, you know, that we need to take care of. I said, can, hey, our sheriff department, our police department, can they stage a car there? Can they just, you know, ride there? I don't care, get a cup of coffee? Could, could we do something to make sure that our presence, I mean, the police department or the sheriff department presence is known within our community? But we understand that we are short-staffed. So, so that's why we here, that's why we called the emergency meeting. That's why the people came out today, because they want to make sure that they can hear some new options. We don't want to just continue to talk about relationships that's being strained on council. Sometimes this stuff is fabricated, okay? Because one thing about myself, I make sure I talk to everyone on this council. Okay? That's one thing about me. I don't have any friction with anyone. All I care about is the people, okay? And, and that's what it's all about.
Yes, it is.
But, but my thing is, we had to do something. We can't wait to another council meeting. We can't wait to people continue to make up rumors and talk about things and insinuate what we're not doing. We had to do something. And this is something, this is a call to action right now.
Right.
Okay? And we are all here together looking for answers. And I do appreciate you coming out and letting us know exactly what we can do going forward.
Yeah, and I really appreciate the invitation. I think it was wise and a good call to have this meeting, I really do. Because, you know, a crime again is, it's not just important, but we live in Portsmouth and we're concerned about Portsmouth. Not that we're concerned about, not concerned about other cities surrounding us, but, but we really have to, to, to come together here. And, you know, and when I went on and talked about maybe conflicts among you all, I'm just, I'm, I'm just sharing with you, just giving something to think about, that's all. That if it's happening, think about it. If it's not happening, still think about it. Because that still opens your eyes to the possibilities of not being able to work together or being able to work together to accomplish what we need. So that's why it was important, it's just that I'm out in the community and that's, the community's concerned and even though I got this uniform on, number one, I'm a citizen, secondly, I'm the sheriff. So it was just that concern that I thought, just needed to be out in the open and for everybody can have an opportunity to really just think about it and just move forward, working together. That's it.
Right, and, and I'm not, like I say, this is not directed towards you, but I'm in the community every single day as well and I see these things. And also, you know, you, you know some of the people, because guess what, these are your neighbors, these are people you grew up with, you know, these people just have different experiences with. So, you know, but the thing is, I know my community.
Yeah, and sometimes the only way to stop talk is to talk about it.
Absolutely.
So that's all I was trying to do is talk about it, get it out there and let's just move on, that's it.
Right. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, sure you have the floor and then Mr. Battle.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the facts are, are going out correctly. Now, Sheriff, you said that you mentioned this two weeks ago, two weeks ago about this, about this program. So in our conversation, the urgency of it is now.
Right.
Because if you mentioned it two weeks ago, we've had a council meeting already and I haven't heard anything mentioned about this program. We have a council meeting coming up. I haven't seen this on the agenda to be discussed. And what, the reason why I wanted to elevate it to this level is because talk is cheap. And if we have these type of resources that you've had experience in working with, then we need to know about it. And we need to make sure that it stays on the burner to make it happen. Now, the rollout from six months ago that Councilwoman Burke just mentioned, now I just asked you a few minutes ago if this is the boots on the ground? And you said, yes, that this, this is where we're putting boots on the ground.
This program.
Right.
Right, exactly. That's, that's manpower.
Right. So now with your knowledge of working with the federal government and the, and the DEA and ATF, what boots on the ground resulted from the rollout six months ago? What, what do we see? And, and if it's there, inform us and, and, and let us know what federal resources are now in the community that's adding to law enforcement and addressing the crime issue?
None that I know of, but Chief Prince may be able to answer that because we had a discussion about that last Friday.
Well, see, let me just say, that's problematic because you're in the community. We had this big rollout and I, I know you for years, Mike, Sheriff Moore, and, and I've known you to be honest. And I, and I know you don't want to try to stir anything up. But see, I'm in a position here where decisions have to be made and policies have to be put in place.
Right.
So when, when you show me a rollout and all these feds are sitting in here and then I ask, well, are there boots on the ground? And you tell me, no, that, not that you know of. You see, and which I think you're honest. And so I'm saying, it's urgent that we discuss this now so that we don't keep putting this window dressing like it's something happening that's not really happening.
Right.
And I don't want to be a part of window dressing. And I think that speaking about this, whether we agree or disagree with you as a council, this is something that needs to be brought to the attention of the community, that these are re- are resources that are available that we can implement. And you're one that has worked with it. And so, and have connections still because of your background. And so, that's why I say, I don't want to couch this in the way that it has been presented personally. It has nothing to do with that. It has to do with, are we going to get the necessary boots on the ground here in the city to address those issues? And that's what we need to do.
And those are two key points. And the reason that probably you haven't heard anything about it from the discussion that I had with the city manager and the mayor is because I asked him to just hold off. And actually, I was trying to make contact with Senator Warner and Senator Kane. Senator Kane was the mayor of Richmond during the time at the height of the homicides in Richmond.
That's right.
So, I'm trying to use them to act as a go-between to set up this meeting with me, with those directors of those primary two agencies, ATF and the FBI and even the DEA, to fast-track this thing. So, I'm working on getting that appointment. I actually had one scheduled late Friday, but because of what's going on in Ukraine, that meeting was called off to hopefully one day next week because I'm going up to talk to them in person. Because I think that's how we can get it fast-tracked and get a yes or a no and get a win. The other thing is, with the federal agencies that participated six months ago in that news conference, that's my word, that's why I can't speak on behalf of the chief, I'm a little disappointed because they have not been actively involved like I thought we had talked about prior to that news conference and after that news conference. And I'll give you a prime example. I have a deputy that's assigned to the DEA task force and a deputy assigned to the Homeland Security Task Force. So, I'm pulling those deputies back to work in conjunction with what's going on in the city of Portsmouth. And when I ask for those deputies to come back for a minimum of 120 days, or at least throughout the entire summer, I'm looking for federal resources to come with them. If I've supplied a deputy participate on your federal task force, when we're in need, I expect that deputy to come back and bring support from that agency.
Right.
That did not happen. And I understand there are manpower issues also, but this is a unique situation that we're in in Portsmouth and everywhere, but especially Portsmouth. That's all I'm concerned about is Portsmouth.
Right.
So, that's why I was a little disappointed in following that news conference and then, and not being able to get that. Because even if you just get one or two agents from each federal agency located in Norfolk, that's a huge help. That's a huge help. So, that was a disappointment. So, that's why I decided to take this route. This time, I'm going to the top. I'm not, no disrespect to the local supervisors, the area supervisors here in Norfolk, but we can get that answer a lot quicker by going through the top, going to the top and we're going to use the senators to hook that up and set that meeting up. Because once I sit down and share those statistics with them that the city manager was able to get me, it's going to be eye-opening. And I can't see them not agreeing to work to help Portsmouth right now when we really, really need that assistance.
So, the question becomes then, why weren't they involved and what things need to be adjusted or moved so that we don't have this type of delay or time passing by?
Well, I think they understand now because I've gone as far as they're threatening, I'm not going to send another task force back to participate on your federal task force until you really reciprocate the help that we give you, now reciprocate and give that back to the city of Portsmouth. So, it's just, you know, it's just that simple. We help you all out on a multi-time basis yearly. I mean, we've had a task force agent with DEA probably for 15 years. So, now we're asking for your assistance.
And then this last boots on the ground issue, I noticed at the high schools, you have the police there and you have the sheriff there. Is it necessary, if we're talking about putting more out into the community, is it necessary to have both law enforcement agencies at the high schools at the same time?
Personally, I don't think so. I think with one law enforcement official there along with the security that the school provides, which most high schools, I think it's three or four in-house security with the school, I think that's enough. But, you know, we can always address issues if something come up, we can deploy people to that. But, right now, the manpower issue is critical.
Thank you.
Mr. Battle, Mr. Vice Mayor Barnes.
Also, let Mr. Moore know that when he get up at 12:01, he can come and get me and I'll ride with him. Am I right?
Yes, sir, you did offer that.
Now, we have, I have several vehicles that cost $5,000 and they'll go anywhere in the country. I know that we can get 15 vehicles for the sheriff for under $70,000. And we need to possibly approve for the city manager to expedite that because that visibility is needed. That's something we can do, put in play right now and then we can say, at least we got one thing done immediately. So, can I get a consensus for Ms. Manager to get those 15 vehicles for the sheriff's department so we can?
Sir, sir, we're not, we're not, we're not going to be entertaining that at this meeting at this time. That is a budgetary item and that will come under our budget when we have our budget discussion, sir. Sir, we are not going to discuss that tonight.
Oh, we're not discussing law enforcement.
Okay, thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
I just wanted to say regarding what Councilman Woodard asked about the law enforcement, two separate law enforcement, I think that was something too that if you talk to the principals, because they're all in the high schools if I'm correct, when you talk to the principals, that's something that they actually felt comfortable with as well, especially what's going on in the neighborhoods surrounding them. But I just wanted to say, as far as the presentation, it was a good presentation. Hopefully, we can implement that and see where that can take us and clear up some of this crime. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, thank you, Sheriff. One of the things I wanted to say was, I've listened intently and I want to share some thoughts with you all about what we were doing as a council. There's been some words stated that, you know, couching or whatever these kind of terminologies are that we're using. But one thing you know about Mayor Glover, he's not about couching or hiding. One of the things that we partook in, and Sheriff, you were a part of it and so were many stakeholders in this room, when we first start seeing an uptick in crime, the mayor called for a task force and the vice mayor even showed up at some of those task force meetings. We had several stakeholders in that task force and the purpose was of the task force was to bring individuals together in this city that had a stake in reducing crime and we started the conversation on what we could do. Is that correct, Sheriff?
Yes, that's correct.
And we did that and we continue to do that. And what came out of that, that discussion of bringing stakeholders together was to bring federal law enforcement to the city of Portsmouth, the DEA, the USA's office, ATF, and all the supporting agencies as a show of solidarity to combat that crime. When we had our press conference, all of those were attendants, including the Commonwealth's attorney. Is that correct?
Correct.
Four of my colleagues decided not to come because they determined that it was a grandstanding event. Understanding this very clearly, I don't grandstand. Every life lost in this city is too many. But to carry that a little bit forward, after we had that meeting with the federal law enforcement and all the local law enforcement agencies and we sat here in solidarity and talked about a way forward, we had a subsequent meeting. And that meeting included the city manager, the Commonwealth's attorney. I don't think you could make that meeting that day, Sheriff. You were aware of the meeting though, were you not?
Yes.
And we had the regional assistant, Assistant U.S. Attorney's Office in that meeting, who pledged their support for this program I'm getting ready to mention, which is Project Safe Neighborhood. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And when they talked about Project Safe Neighborhood, they talked about what the success of this program has been in other localities, right?
Yes.
And so, we set a timeframe and that was in the fall. At that time, the new chief was coming in, we had a lot of things going on, but we did set a timeframe. And what we did with Project Safe Neighborhood, ladies and gentlemen, I sent a copy of this out to all of my colleagues on council. Some of them may have read it, but I did. And in any event, we had a meeting last Thursday with the stakeholders in that Project Safe Neighborhood effort. Your office was there, the office of probation was there, we had trauma people there from Mr. Stephen Williams from Centerra Healthcare, we had other stakeholders, we had Mr. Dale Redman, who gives back to the block nonprofit organization, who is working with the police department. We had Ms. Monica Atkins, who works with 757 Stop the Violence Program. We also had the Assistant U.S. Attorney, John Butler, and we also had the FBI in the room and ATF in the room. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, what we all discussed as a group was this whole idea of this Project Safe Neighborhood, which is in addition to Operation Legend, which that program has evolved and the reason it's named Operation Legend is because it was named after four-year-old Legend Tia Farrow, who was killed while sitting in, sleeping in his bed in Kansas City, Missouri. Okay? So, we were very much aware, and when I read that story, I was, and everybody in that room was even more committed. When we sat down last Thursday, all of those stakeholders were in the room and we all committed, we all committed to a strategy under Project Safe Neighborhood. Let me read to you what that strategy is. Project Safe Neighborhood has four principles. It is community engagement, prevention and intervention, strategic enforcement, and accountability. But let me go on to give you a little bit more information, ladies and gentlemen and my colleagues on council. The reason why we wanted to use this federal program, because it's been successful in a number of communities, Richmond, Detroit, Baltimore, and I, just so you know, I'm in conversation with my good friend, Mayor Brandon Scott, in the city of Baltimore. Brandon is 36 years old, but Brandon and I have participated on a number of these particular platforms and are working very close together. Now, to kind of bring some light to that, during that meeting, we determined that under this project call-in, Project Safe Neighborhood, what individuals, the probation and other folks would identify some of the bad actors in our community. And those individuals would be approached and they would be given an opportunity to come forward and stop their bad activities. Is that correct?
Correct.
And as a part of that, we were going to be able to give those individuals resources that will enable them to turn their life around if they chose, if they chose to do so. But on the flip side, because our community's safety is the number one priority, we also had the long arm of the law with us. And if those individuals decided that they weren't going to fly right or do right, we were going to go after them with the full extent of the law. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what Project Safe Neighborhood is.
Yes.
And it's a very proven program that shows much promise. Within that, what we left with was a timeline of events. There's a sequential order of things that need to happen. I know everybody wants to stop crime today, but unfortunately, we didn't get to crime today. Crime is something that is a part of our society and by God, we're going to do everything to uproot crime. But we're working very intently with the federal government, with Operation Legend, who you brought to the table and you did, you did state to me and the city manager, give me some time to put it all together. But at no time did we ever suggest that we weren't on board with that.
No, no, you didn't.
In fact, we encouraged you.
Yes.
And I said, whatever you need, Sheriff, you need to put in play. But let me also be clear with the community. Sheriff Michael Moore is one of the most upstanding gentlemen I know, but the sheriff is not the police chief. The city manager is the CEO that we hire as citizens and council. And the city manager is responsible for hiring the police chief. And ultimately, the police chief is responsible for policing in this city and they work very collaboratively with our sheriff and it is a symbiotic and wonderful relationship. And let me just add a couple of other things of what we're doing in the city of Portsmouth in terms of some of the leadership to bring more attention to this gun violence and bring resources. I attended the United States Conference of Mayors this year, supporting or in support of the city and representing the city of Portsmouth, Virginia. In that attendance, I had the opportunity to sit in on a session with the group called the Mayors Against Illegal Guns. It's a national organization. We joined that organization. And the reason we joined that organization, because they have resources, they have grant dollars and other resources that we can, through our work, be able to deploy here in the city of Portsmouth and they will help us to move forward. In addition to that, I also had the privilege of participating in the Bloomberg Harvard Initiative. Some of you may have heard of that. The Bloomberg Harvard Initiative is something that Michael Bloomberg put together to help the mayors all across the world to improve their communities. In that class that I had this year, there were several mayors in there, but most importantly, I had an opportunity to sign the city of Portsmouth up to participate in an innovation program that is sponsored and supported by the Bloomberg philanthropies. And that program enables us to put together a leadership team here in the city of Portsmouth. And I know the chief of, our fire chief is here today, who is leading our effort in that program. But what I wanted to make clear was, they asked me what track did I want our city to come under so that they can give us the resources? I said, the track is an innovation track and we need to find creative ways to end the gun violence in the city of Portsmouth. And now, we're convening different departments and different stakeholders within our city leadership team to do that. So, this idea, this idea that our chief, perhaps our leadership under the city manager has been at the table, I can tell you personally, there is no one that has felt the impact of gun violence than our city manager. She has worked with a group of young men who have come before her to assist them in getting their lives turned around and unfortunately, one of those young men lost their life last week. I don't need anyone on this dais to explain to me or tell me what that means. She is a mother, she is someone who is absolutely professional, and we have a chief of police and police officers and a sheriff who is committed to safety and security in the city of Portsmouth. I applaud you, sir, and I applaud our chief and I applaud our city manager. And all I can say to you, I can't speak for anybody else up on this dais, but I will speak for myself and I will do whatever that I can do personally or otherwise to ensure that you all have the resources to do your job. And I thank you for coming in front of us.
Again, thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
We do have a need, there is a motion on the table to go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, before that, the sheriff raised a question about the federal intervention and not knowing of any boots. And the chief is here, he said he couldn't speak for the chief if the chief could inform us of those.
Absolutely. Chief, would you please like to come forward and add something to the discussion, sir?
Well, I'm, Chief Prince, I was more interested in just following up on the comment that Sheriff Moore made as far as the rollout from six months ago and all of the federal agencies we saw here and the sheriff not having knowledge as far as actual boots on the ground, federal enforcement officers actually being in the communities as a result of that. Do you have any knowledge of that?
There's a couple of different ways to look at that, sir, and thank you for the opportunity first. We've had some federal agencies here that have operated with us, boots on the ground. As a matter of fact, that Operation Red Ball that you saw a few weeks back, there were federal entities involved in that. We had ATF, U.S. Marshal Service, DEA, and FBI. We have partnered with them, we continue to partner with them, but as the sheriff said, both of us have been forced to withdraw our, the officers that we have assigned to those task force and it's a give and take. They are suffering as the rest of the country as far as law enforcement goes and they are tasked out. However, with that said, when we call and we have an emergency operation, they give the resources that they have here locally. As far as the rollout for that particular program, as the mayor described it, it's the same process and it is a process. You have to gather your resources, you have to make those steps and take the steps necessary to go ahead and make the program actually work. If you miss a step, the program will not work. They have worked for us and they have identified that They have worked for us, and they have identified that 2% of our population that has identified themselves as the biggest problem for the city of Portsmouth. They have a problem where they have identified the biggest problems for all of Hampton's, Hampton Roads that are causing problems not only here, but everywhere else. They're in the background, and the federal agencies will always be in the background. What the sheriff has described is correct. I need you to recognize that our federal partners will augment us to a certain extent. You will not see them in a patrol car operating by themselves. You will not see them out contacting people without having a police officer attached to them. What they are very good at is augmenting us when we form task force. The bonus to what the sheriff is proposing is that they can sustain it longer. When we do things locally, we get what they can provide locally. It's just like the police department and the sheriff department with our limited resources. We often partner together, but we can only hold it for a little while. What the sheriff proposed was new, and as he said, he gave me some information, and it finally perked back up, and they started in 2020, which might be why I didn't know anything about that particular task force, but I never operated at the federal agency level as he did. So, that's a boon for us, that's great. I want you all to know that we work together and we do what needs to be done. As far as the federal partners, I, the U.S., the Assistant U.S. Attorney has been in constant contact and has offered us to do any and everything that they can to help us prosecute, to help us find funds so that we can operate better. Where are those funds? I don't know. They're still looking for ways to try to help us in that area. I can say that the FBI has been great. They're actually looking at one of my people who helped develop programs to help track criminals in this area. He's that good, the feds actually want him, and we're utilizing him as well. FBI, ATF, the U.S. Marshal Service never left us, even though we couldn't staff our position with them, they use us and we use them to contact people who flee from us and go outside of our jurisdictional areas to go get them, and that's what the U.S. Marshal Service does. Boots on the ground, that's a hard term, because the federal government doesn't really operate where we're going to put people in your patrol cars, they will to a certain extent. And like I said, once again, what the sheriff is proposing is a good ideal, and it will help us, and it should help us reduce crime, and if done right, and we do, if it's done right, and we do it in conjunction with what we've proposed with safe neighborhoods, because it all works together. It's just more their resources when we do enact things, because that last piece of it, the prevention, the intervention, and the enforcement, the enforcement part is the pressure, because nobody wants to face federal numbers when it comes time to look at prisons, because they don't do 10, 20. They do 340 months, which I don't even know what that is in years, but it's more than I'd want to do. So, we are active, we are pursuing the goal of trying to reduce crime in the city of Portsmouth. We've partnered with everybody else. We spoke about Niven, we've partnered with the ATF, and we have an agreement with Norfolk, and Niven is a way of tracking weapons, shell cases, and connecting crimes in our region. Not only have we partnered with them, we've partnered with Chesapeake, who is in the process of getting their own machine, so we can process those crimes even faster on two fronts. So, that's very big, because it tells a story that we might not see. It tells us the story of somebody's doing shootings in Norfolk, somebody's doing shootings in Chesapeake, and here in Portsmouth, but it's all the same gun. Those are pieces that the boots on the ground, that's another piece, the technical part. It looks slow to everybody, and it is. I live here. I'm one block from the homicide that occurred on Elm. So, I don't want anybody to think it doesn't impact me, I don't sleep at night. And I say this, and I don't mean to speech at you all. I don't sleep at night, because I worry about the officers, I worry about the citizens. There's a bunch of them behind me right now. I know I look, and I know the majority of the people behind me. I worry about them. I'm a professional, but I care about this community. I'm new here. The majority of the people have embraced me, and they're trying to give me a chance to be the chief that they want and that they deserve. To make a quick, I've been the chief for five months here. Five. The things that I have implemented, I had written down, it's about three and a half pages from community engagement to actions to decrease crime, I mean, I got it all. And I'm doing everything that my 40-plus years, I think it's 41 now, years of law enforcement, that I'm putting, I'm combining things just to make it work. And I'm not pleading, I'm telling you that I'm using everything that I've been exposed to in law enforcement, I'm using everything that you will see in the adjoining jurisdictions. I took the playbook out, and I ripped the pages out, and I'm re-typing it, and I'm coming up with different things. Will it work? Yeah, it will. I, I don't want anybody to be delusional, think what the sheriff is proposing, what I'm proposing is going to snap, and it's going to make a difference overnight. It is not. This is a process, and I don't want it to be a slow process, but with the people that I know that are behind me right now in this community, the difference is going to happen. There will be change. I'm not saying be content with the way things are, I'm not. I drive my people hard, and I know it. I worked some of these people, like I told you before, 12 days straight on 12-hour shifts. I can't push them any further, because when they get tired and people get tired, we make mistakes. If my people make a mistake, that's a million or million-dollar checks that the council will have to try to sign. I, I want to step off, because my wife just got in a wreck in her car, so I'm trying to hold it down here a little bit. But I'm not leaving here until I've addressed all of your questions and all your concerns. If I didn't, if I didn't correctly, let me know, sir, and I'll go right back at it.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry to hear about, about your wife, but as far as your commitment to the city and your work, that's not being questioned at all. I think that a lot of times, information gets out in person, start giving misinterpretations. I do have a question very quickly.
Yes, sir.
The Operation Red Ball.
Yes, sir.
Because we know the issue has been sustainability, and that's what I'm hearing, the sheriff saying that the Legends or ACES is more sustainable. The Operation Red Ball, how long did that last?
We ran that four days, and we backed up off of it, because the number of days of officers have been working. What I will tell you is that it will be repeated over and over again. What I won't say is when, because we already have a schedule set out for it, because we're not going to advertise to the people who are causing us harm in this community, we're going to show up. And we're going to ask our federal partners to come again, and they'll send what they can, I'm sure. Will it be as large as it was before? I don't know, but it's going to, we're going to ask, and we've already got it scheduled out for X amount of officers to come in on whatever day, and we, we start those operations back up again. We didn't stop, we had to slow down so that we could rest and take a breath. The sheriff has offered people, and we're going to invite those people in to the party as well.
Right. So, I know you need all of it, and so, the difference between this and the ACES is that the Legends, that will be in the community on a more continuous basis.
Yes, sir.
And this is more like a random.
Yes, sir. What we're doing right now is random. ACES, because of the amount of resources we hope that the feds can commit, is more sustainable. As the sheriff said, if they can bring it in, and they can do 120-plus days, if we can provide the people to go ahead and go along with that, then we've got something. But once again, if we can, they're fine, because they'll be here on a temporary duty assignment, and they got their per diem, they'll have their hotels. We, on the other hand, still have to maintain our operational tempo in the streets and answer those service calls for the public. So, we have to figure out a way, once they come in, if we can get them here to be able to coordinate and put staffing out there to work with them, because they're not going out there without us. That's not the way it works. They need us. We need them a lot worse, but they need us so they can go in our community. They don't know our community, we do.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Battle, so you have the floor.
To the citizens, when we have an emergency situation, that's not part of a budgetary item. The city always have funds for emergency situations. If it comes up, we have to meet that obligation. So, sometimes, we can't wait six, eight months and budget for a problem that we have today. Thank you.
Councilman Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, well, Chief, fantastic job. Like I say, I don't think we are here to talk about anybody's individual status or evaluate them individually with you guys. We are here to actually come up with solutions, okay? When I hear a lot of meetings that were in the past, and nothing has come out with, that led to another meeting, that is a problem, that is very dangerous, okay? I still live in these communities, and when I keep hearing the, these weeks in between these meetings, we just had a council meeting last week, okay? And because of some incidences happened this weekend, we, we thought it was necessary, we thought it was appropriate to call this meeting right here, okay? So, I'm just telling the, the public that we can't keep entertaining this, this lip service, it is dangerous to do that. We have to make sure that we are doing something. So, when we called this meeting, we had council members who was reluctant to have this meeting, and, and look who showed up. So, I'm just telling you guys, we're not here to talk about anybody's, their, their employment status, that's not what we're here for, okay? That is not what we're here for, and I want that to be clear, okay? Because someone on our council right now has been rebuttling about who did what, what they done in the past, we are talking about today here, all right? And I, and I said this in the past, all the crime don't happen in, in a PRHA community or downtown, because guess what? This stuff start creeping further along into our neighborhoods, further along into your neighborhood, we, we don't even have a safe zone right now, okay? It's no safe zone. You can't take your family nowhere and say, you know what, this right here is secure. It's, it's nowhere in Portsmouth right now that you probably can say, you know what, I can take my family here, and I know nothing's going to happen. That doesn't exist, okay? And, and we can't wait till the next council meeting to talk about these things. So, that's why this meeting is called today. So, when I hear this, this verbiage, this lip service of how much people care about it, well, guess what? Well, well, we need action, we, we all want action, okay? Not just you guys, but we want action as well, all right? So, so, this is why we're here today, and, and I just, I'm telling the chief, the city manager, we are not here to talk about what you've been doing, but what we're here to do is find out what we can do when we leave here going forward, that's all we want to know. And I think that's what the people want to know, that's what the council want to know, I think that's what you may want to know. What resources can we deploy to make sure that you are successful, okay? I talked to our city manager about roadblocks, checkpoints, cameras, can we give some, some extra security guards, some jurisdistries, some authority to take care of two or three blocks? These are ideas that we have to think of outside of the box. I know we're talking about federal agencies and whatnot, that's fine and dane, of course, we, we want all the help we can get, but hey, if we can start today and figure out what we can do in-house, let's make sure we can get that done. That's what it's about, that's why we call Sheriff Moore here. Because guess what? We don't have to fly him in, he's right here in, within our city limits, and we can pick his brain and figure out exactly what we can do. So, I don't, I don't want to hear about pulling all these people in, or how many meetings we got to have. It was a problem that, that was horrific to our, our citizens, horrific to our neighborhoods, and this meeting was called ASAP. That's the type of action that we looking for, okay?
Thank you, sir.
That's what we looking for.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not finished, and I don't know what he cut me off for, okay? So, so that's the type of action that we're looking for. And once again, once again, we must make sure that we know where the disrespect is coming from, because I don't throw it anywhere. I'm here for everyone, black, white, I'm here for everyone, old and young, because I want to make sure that we make Portsmouth a safe place to be, because my mom and dad still live here, my family live here, and your family live here as well, and that's what I'm elected for. Let's make sure that we all continue to work together, and let's make sure we call out the perpetrators who do not want to work together.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
We do have a need for a closed session. Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Before we go into closed session, with the community here and the concern for violence, I just want to read this statement that Coretta Scott King made. She made it after Dr. King had been assassinated, and I think as we talk about crime and violence, that she puts it in a context that I think we need to make sure we understand. The, the question was asked of her about the violence that was committed against her husband and killing him. She said, "I must remind you that starving a child is violence, neglecting schoolchildren is violence, punishing a mother and her family is violence, discrimination against a working man is violence, ghetto housing is violence, ignoring medical need is violence, contempt for poverty is violence." So, I hope that as we are so much concerned about the gun violence, that we see also the social context in which violence occurs, and more people are dying across our nation and in our cities over poverty every day than gun violence, and I think we need to make sure as a council, as we have attempted to do, that we are addressing those areas as well. And so, I just wanted to share that with the council and the community as we look to address violence that is not just limited to guns.
Thank you, sir. We have a need to go into closed session, and does someone want to read the motion?
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2-2-3711 8.1 for purpose of discussion and consideration of performance of the city manager.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
No.
Mr. Moody.
No.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
No.
You are in closed session.
We do have a need to come out of closed session, so do we have a motion? I mean, would you please read the certification?
Yes.
And then, we're in need of a motion in a second.
All right. I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
We have read the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes.
Mayor, you already closed it.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you.[1784.78]